We are going to be posting this right after we are done. My name is Lauren Bartholomew. I'm the president of the Isaguac PTA Council. I'd like to welcome you to this PTA Council Board Candidate Forum. I'd also like to welcome the candidates that have joined us for this evening. The questions for tonight's forum are based on submissions by Isaguac School District PTA members. Thank you to everyone who submitted questions. Thank you also to everyone who worked to make this event happen, including Timothy, uh, sorry Tiffany Fleishman, who will be assisting. Um, myself will be timekeeping tonight. Just a reminder that Isaguac PTA does not endorse any candidate and is simply facilitating and moderating this event. I'd like to introduce Courtney Eldridge, the PTA Council Advocacy Representative, who is going to introduce the candidates and moderate tonight's forum.
Thank you, Lauren. Welcome and thank you to our four school board candidates representing District Two and District Four for agreeing to participate in our Isaguac PTA Council 2.6 School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Courtney Eldridge and I currently am serving as the Isaguac Council Legislative Advocacy Chair and the Isaguac Middle School PTA President. The mission of PTA centers around advocacy work, helping children reach their true potential through collaboration, commitment, diversity, respect, and accountability. As one of the largest grassroots parents-led organizations in the nation, PTA encourages voter advocacy by hosting candidate forums. The Isaguac School Board has five members. The board establishes establishes the boundaries of acceptability within which the superintendent's methods and activities can responsibly be left to the superintendent. These limiting policies apply to the superintendent's means rather than ends. In other words, the school board sets the goal, the ends, and the superintendent sets the how, the means. The Isaguac School Board represents a continuing commitment to local citizen control and decision-making in education. The members focus on establishing school district goals, providing for program development activities, overseeing the financial affairs of the district, adopting operation policies, assuring systematic review and evaluation of all phases of the school program, and advocating on behalf of students and schools. As a parent and active member of our PTA, I appreciate the commitment our candidates show to our ISD community being willing to serve in this important role. All right, candidates, let's begin. You will each be given two minutes for an introduction, followed by a series of questions that have been pre-selected from our community members. Each candidate will receive the same question with a two-minute response. The timer will be visible on the screen. And Lauren, would you like to show them what the timer will look like? Right there, perfect. And we'll go ahead and we'll begin with our two-minute introductions. We'll start with our District Two candidates, beginning with Marnie Maraldo. And then we'll go to Robin Poe, followed by our District Four candidates, Dr. Wendy Giora and Sydney Mullings. Okay, Marnie.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much to the Isaguac PTA Council for providing this time to share with the community our goals and why we're running for the school board and being able to share our visions. My name is Marnie Maraldo. I've been serving on the Isaguac School Board since 2009, back when my son was in fifth grade and my daughter was in first grade. Both my kids receive special services from the district and they are at the core of my mantra, that all means all and that's all all means. Over my time on the board, the district has made positive strides in addressing the needs of students who may come to our schools with more barriers to their learning. I'm especially excited about the district's current work, moving towards including students with special accommodations into classroom with their peers who do not need special services. Another area I'm looking forward to see success is in the district's work to address the needs of students with dyslexia. But there is definitely more work to do in this area. Of course, given the past year and a half, I feel we need to move from looking at our students more broadly to looking at the needs of each and every student. The pandemic pandemic has been difficult, to say the least. Some of our students fared okay, some even thrived while participating in remote learning. But we know that so many students have been impacted, have struggled and fallen behind. We will need to spend the next several years helping students catch up and feel confident in their learning. The other area of focus for the board is the restoration of our relationships with the adults in our system, both our staff and our neighbors. It seems everything in our world is so divided, but our students are served best when we align ourselves with our collective goal, providing all students with a strong, effective education that will set them up to reach their full potential. My goal is to work towards rebuilding the trust in our district. So thank you for your time and I hope by the end of the evening you will feel more informed as you make your election decision.
Wonderful, thank you. And Robin, we'll go to you.
Thank you for inviting me to this forum. And um, this is the first time I've ever run for anything, so this has been a learning experience for me too. So I guess I'm getting an education. But um, I've always had a strong interest in uh, children being properly educated, especially in STEM education, which is so important for job opportunities in the modern world, you know, in the tech, you know, there's a lot of technology that's involved in work now. And the other thing is literacy. Because if you can't read, you're going to be behind in everything. So we need, I think it's important to ensure that every child has an acceptable level of literacy by the time they graduate. I I I've known too many people who have gotten through through school and never learned to read. And there's still a huge amount of people that there, it's like something like twenty, twenty percent of the people cannot read above a second grade level, which is a tragedy, I I think. And also, um, I would like to see, uh, you know, I I'm I'm fairly conservative in my politics. I I think that we need to have an education that adapts to our American culture. And because if we, we know everything around us is American and our American traditions. And if they can't adapt to that, as they they get skewed off into some other read areas, they're just gonna not be able to adapt to society. And um, so anyway, I think it's important that education centers around helping them to mold themselves into an effective, productive adult in our society.
Thank you. Okay, Wendy, you're up next.
I love the Isaguac community. Board members here have many duties such as evaluating the superintendent, creating policies, and approving budgets. And I'm well qualified in all these areas. However, as a teacher and school principal for over thirty-four years with a doctorate in educational leadership, teaching young people and finding the key to their success is my passion. I'm the only candidate with a teaching and educational leadership experience. One of the reasons I'm running for school board is to ensure all the students who got lost and fell behind during Zoom classes will be given the extra help needed to get caught up in all academic areas. I am your back to the basics candidate. Currently, there are plans at the state level to lower the goals and expectations in all academic classes, switch to a pass-fail grading system, and cut all the gifted classes. Parents are already asking me, why is my child not being given homework this year? To achieve equity, school districts are considering lowering our academic standards, even though most studies have shown that disadvantaged students who take challenging courses, perform well academically, graduate on time, and are successful in college and find great jobs. Transitioning these students into higher-quality, more rigorous curriculum provides a higher degree of student success in college than almost any other reform. According to a 2020 USA Today article, the U.S. ranks ninth in reading and thirty-first in math out of seventy-nine countries tested. Parents move to Isaguac because of the excellence and quality of education they expect from our schools. I stand for keeping and even improving that quality, not diminishing it. I will fight to keep the quality and standards high in every classroom for every child. To achieve these goals, I ask for your vote, Dr. Wendy Giora for Isaguac School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sydney, you're next.
Thanks so much for including me in tonight's forum. I'm sure this is going to be an awesome opportunity to connect with this important uh, part of our community and share more about me and my background and why the work of the Isaguac School Board is so important. I'm Sydney Mullings and I've proudly served on the Isaguac School Board since 2019. I was appointed to a board vacancy following an extensive application and interview process. I was then duly elected in November of that same year. I have an undergrad degree from Penn State University and a master's degree from DePaul. Community service is a long, a lifelong commitment for me, and I have an extensive history of nonprofit board service. I've worked in tech for over twenty years and my family relocated to Isaguac in 2014. With two children currently in the Isaguac schools, I truly empathize with the challenges faced by parents, students, and teachers over the course of the last few years. And I'm deeply committed to ensuring that all of our students have access to exceptional educational experiences. Throughout my time on the board, I've studied each topic and issue deeply, asked questions for understanding, uh, make what I believe were the best decisions to serve our students, staff, and community. In the last two years, highlighted that a school board director must possess deep analytical skills, be a strong collaborator, and be able to listen across differing perspectives. And I can say that I have the right skills and the commitment to continue to serve this community. Isaguac School District is a top-rated district in both our state and the country. And to ensure that we continue delivering these positive outcomes, we have much work to do to keep our schools open, recover from any learning loss in our system with plans underway, and repair the seams in our community. I bring both a balanced perspective and a drive for forward progress. It's been an honor to serve as part of the Isaguac School Board, and I look forward to continuing my service.
Thank you. All right, ladies, let's head into our questions. Um, we'll begin in no particular order. We'll begin with Marnie, then we'll go to Robin, then Wendy, and then Sydney. So the first question that we have is, how do you think that the school board can be more authentically engaged with their constituents? Marnie, we'll begin with you.
Um, that's a great question. And during the pandemic pandemic, it has been very difficult for us to feel authentically engaged. I think um, we have, one of the things that I know it's frustrating for the community, but we kept our public comments, uh, live public comments to the board opened during remote meetings uh, last year when most other districts in the nation didn't do that. So it was very difficult and it's not the same relationship. So I think some of the authentic work we want to do is go back to some of our engagement. We started a town hall. Um, I'm hoping that we're hoping to do another one and I hope that we'll have even more in attendance. Um, I think work on our committees such as the levy committee. Um, we have an IMC, which is a materials committee that reviews the our materials. Just the involvement in the in the different work of the district. We also have an equity advisory committee that has not been able to meet in the past year. So there's so many engagements that we've um, we've done in the past that we haven't had the opportunity to do. The other pieces we've had, um, we were doing prior to the pandemic, we were meeting with um, students every year at each of our um, high schools. And so I can't wait to regain those conversations as well. Um, there is so much that they can provide to us. We're also looking at revamping our student rep um, position, the student reps that we have sitting on the board so that they can really begin to de- uh, dive deeper into the work of the board and provide us information. In the past, our students have provided um, information back at us when looking at policy or looking at proposals for legislation. And they've actually helped us wordsmith things and and get deeper into that work. So to me, that's some of the authentic uh, engagement that I'd like to get past, uh, get back to that we were doing previously.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Robin, you're up.
Yes, I um, I think one of the best ways to be more engaged is um, open communication and transparency about things that are being done, any actions that are being taken. And also, um, perhaps, um, well, one of the things that I it seems like, because I actually had people emailing me. And it's like the the parents are very concerned about the curriculum. And so I think that maybe uh, there needs to be more input from this, the parents about curriculum. Because I mean, it's their children we're teaching, you know, they're the taxpayers. So if they think that a curriculum is not useful, I mean, we can at least consider that because um, you know, I mean, that that, I mean, it may may not be able to be done, but I do think we should give them serious uh, attention when and serious consideration when they say, I I don't think this is helping my child. And you know, it may not, if it's just one person, but if you start getting more and more and more, uh, maybe they need to take a hard look at what they're teaching. And if it can be modified, uh, then yes, maybe we need to protect, pay attention to that. And also, um, for special needs students, I think that uh, we need to, you know, I think we need to keep the communication lines open with the parents for them because they're going to be very concerned about how their child is doing. So again, it's just communication lines would be a very important part. And also, um, you know, I know that some places, and I don't know if they do that here, but uh, maybe have the students provide input at us at a board meeting or uh, Oak Town Hall. So, because that teacher's done public speaking anyway, so it's another teaching opportunity. So anyway, that's my.
Thank you. Okay, last up, or excuse me, Wendy, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I think the key here is that the community deserves to have two-way communication. Because mostly what people get in the community is one way and it's all coming from the board. When um, parents communicate to the school, they don't receive communication many times. They don't get answers, responses. We were all in a forum with the parents of dyslexic children a couple of weeks ago. And they told us that they have asked for help for years. And they have volunteered to help and to create their own committee to help advise um, the board on what their children need. And they've told them what their needs are and they haven't gotten those handled. So, you know, there needs to be responsiveness and answers that make sense. Um, somebody else mentioned the town hall meeting, which was for parents to attend and communicate at that point with the board with their concerns. And many parents, um, well, there weren't that many there. There were about maybe thirty that showed up, but they did um, say what their concerns were. And several parents, according to the board, which showed, you know, which was the most um, concerned of the most parents there. Um, and they were sort of just not answered or given excuses. Um, so that is to me not being transparent, in my opinion. So if the board wants to be transparent, then they need to have answers or they need to say, we don't have the answer now, but let's set up a meeting and we'll discuss that. And neither of those things happened. So um, and also at board meetings, which I believe Robin mentioned, especially when several parents show up at the same board meeting with the same concern and they're not given a response ever, not only not at the board meeting, but not through email or phone communication or anything. So this definitely is an area that needs to.
That's that, that's all. Thank you. Sydney.
Yeah, thanks for this question. Engagement is certainly a topic that's incredibly important to me. It's what brought me to do the work of joining the school board and it's an item that I've kept top of mind in the entire time I've been on. I think as I think about genuine engagement, there's really two categories. It's what can we do as a full board, all five of us together? Those will be things that you'd see like a school board meeting with input, that will be listening sessions that we can do all together, town halls that we do all together, including our student representatives that we certainly have in each, each of our board meetings, as well as that we've had a conference with us to make sure we're really understanding the pulse of what's going on with our students. Um, so I think there's a wide variety. We've uh, round tables that we've hosted. So there's the first category, what could we do as a full board? And then what do we do as individual board members, which or one or two board members, which widens that engagement opportunity? As an example, a school board member joins the PTA Council and joins in in those meetings. So we can hear the thoughts and um, conversations there and brings that back to the full board or joins meetings with our legislators or with with our municipal partners. So there is a constant cycle of engagement. That engagement may not always be satisfying. There are times that people um, come to a school board meeting and they have something very pressing. Um, and while we may address reasoning or decision-making, that may still feel unsatisfying. And that is the the work that we are, we are here to do, is to continue to hear those various opinions, to ask questions, that help get at some of the concerns that are raised, and and continue to think of those as we go through and engage in our policy work as a board and and with the the district. So engagement's incredibly important. It's top of mind for me. It's what I was doing just before this meeting, meeting with a group of parents in the Raton Highlands and understanding what's important for them and their students. So I think it's great work and it's a big part of why I'm here uh, and I'm looking to run for my next, my next role on the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question. Um, we'll go ahead. After this question, we'll start with Robin, then Marnie, then Sydney, and then Wendy. And here is the question. As a PTA, teachers and staff are a large portion of our organization. Persistent questions have emerged from this group that do merit merit attention in this forum. Specifically, some ISD staff have felt demoralized by the tone and substance of district administrators' comments. As elected school board members, what do you view as your responsibility to repair the damage teachers and staff feel that they have and continue to suffer?
Well, one of the things I do a lot in my own job, because I work with contracts, um, I really, I I have a lot of practice in negotiation. So a lot of times, uh, people see the problem from two different angles. And really, if they agree to discuss and negotiate until we can come to a point and and there's almost every time you can come to a decision where everybody wins. I I have yet to get one where we don't have at least some level of win for each person who's got conflict. But I think that's what you need to do. You need to work to that point where it works for both people. And um, and so that way you can be like a go-between between the PTA and the superintendent um, and administrators and uh, do a better job or trying to get people to see the real problem rather than just their angled problem. So that's what I would do. And also, um, I call it the be fair principle. You know, so like, sort of like, you know, they don't want to see it from their point of view, saying, now be fair. You know, we have to at least consider what they're saying. So I I would probably use the be fair principle. Be fair, come on. Uh, and you know, a lot of it is just um, getting people to see that it's not personal. It's not personal. It's it's just business, you know? And so that's, that would be my approach to something like that. And maybe that would help to repair the damage by getting them to see that everybody can win and it's not personal. It's, you know, there's a lot of hard feelings, but if we can be sympathetic and empathetic to the person, the two, the parties involved, I think you can come to a reasonable solution.
Okay, thank you. All right, Marnie, you're up.
Thank you for this question. And I do know that it is rooted in a specific instance, so which I can't speak to. Um, but that's what can be frustrating as a board. Um, we have one employee and that is the superintendent. And in fact, we've been asking questions around this. What happens when um, a staff member does not live up to those executive limitations that you were talking about Courtney at the beginning of this? How we, how we manage the superintendent is by limiting some of the means. And how much of that responsibility falls on his administrative fa- staff and falls all the way down to every single staff member? We have these ends that we say, these are our goals. And we want to do those goals within the confines of the law, within the confines of how we treat each other with the con- in within the confidence of wanting to teach, uh, treat our children, our students equitably. So how do we do all of that and have that be at the heart of every single person? And every single person feeling they take responsibility for that? I know our teachers work really hard um, to do all, we've, we've thrown so much at them in the past year and a half. And so um, I I want to let them know that we do care about all of those pieces. And we want to take it as a whole unit, as a whole district, that these are our ends, that especially our equity work, um, our other policies, that we want it to be at the heart of every individual. And then there are people that need to be held accountable if they're not falling within that that work and that and that um, and that commitment to our um, our ends. And so I can't speak specifically about any actions that the board could or could not take um, in certain instances, and it feels dissatisfying. And again, I've mentioned that before. It's like if something happened with your student, that's kept between the district and and the family, and it doesn't go out. And that, I know, is also something that has been dissatisfying for uh, for the parent community.
Thank you, Marnie. Okay, Sydney.
Thanks. I I I think, you know, the the weight that has been on our staff and our teachers has been crushing. Uh, it's been crushing for the last two years. And the amount of churn and change that we've had to go through as a school community uh, and as the creator community has has really been unbearable. And I I deeply understand how hurtful it must feel um, when on top of all of that, to deal with unkind words and and uh, frankly, unuseful commentary. And so the first thing you should do is to really acknowledge that that is, it's serious. And that as a, as a board member, my job is to, one, have the pulse of that, to understand what is happening and then how that's landing on our community. And then to be a champion, a voice, and an advocate, that change needs to happen in order to ensure that our staff, um, and then by, you know, then after that, our students aren't affected by what is, what can be and feel horribly demoralizing in our environment. And I think my my commitment to um, be a a voice uh, for our teachers, to be a voice for our staff. Um, I have family members who are in the district. I have friends that are in the district. And and to just make sure that we act as that accountability system is incredibly important in our work as the board. But I think the first thing we have to do is to acknowledge that this has been a really tough time and that everyone is up to their eyeballs in churn and change. And and to really hear and acknowledge the challenges people are going through. And and then to just be clear that my role is to be an accountability system and that I take that very seriously.
Thank you, Sydney. Okay, Wendy.
Thank you for this question. It's it's very important. As a former teacher and principal, I kind of get both viewpoints. Um, if teachers are not happy, um, the reason is usually because they're not being supported. Um, some of them, as you said, have complained that they feel demoralized. Um, we heard from at least one teacher that was uh, asked specifically, are you afraid to report um, your feelings to your, your boss, your administrator? And she said, yes. Why? Because I know there would be repercussions. So if this is kind of the feeling going through the teachers and the staff, then this is not good, that's not a good situation for students to be learning in or for teachers to be teaching in. Um, the board needs to make expectations clear to the superintendent as to what is expected of him in this case. What is he supposed to do and how is he supposed to instruct his staff, his teachers to act? And if there's a problem and they are not acting in the way they're supposed to, then he needs to handle it. Or if they come to him because they feel that there's a real serious problem from a particular administrator in their building, then he needs to take a look at that as well. So all of these things, there's ways to handle them. And if they're not being handled correctly, then um, you should usually look at the top is what I'm, that's my opinion. Um, the board needs to set the in tone, the tone for the engagement with staff for everybody, including from the top down, so that we have a reliable system and that people can do their job and know what's expected of them and not have to worry about repercussions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for this next question, um, Sydney, we'll begin with you. And then Wendy will move to you, and then Marnie and Robin. And here is the question. Students are missing school. This is a direct result of ISD's mitigation efforts and commitment to keeping our schools open. Sometimes despite our educators' best efforts, there remains learning loss for these students due to no direction from the district, providing a plan with clarity and continuity district-wide for how students will access their education while staying home. for how students will access their education while staying home. This presents us with an opportunity to utilize technology and what ISD learned even our youngest learners can accomplish. What would you propose would be best practices moving forward to prevent further learning loss?
One of the things that's really interesting about the time I've been on the board, which, which started out with before pre-COVID, with some snow, deep snowstorms and blizzards and floods, was really the thinking about what does a remote learning environment look like? And starting to have those conversations even well, well before COVID. Which was good because through COVID, we could then accelerate those efforts and ensure that we could put together learning management systems, which now are significantly improved than when we first went into COVID, with being able to rally around systems at elementary and then a single one at, at secondary. There's challenges with that, right? So there's still, we still have to deploy the technology, train all of the professionals to use it and train them to use it in a predominantly home environment, then in a hybrid environment, now back into school. So we still have work to do in order to say, how should we deploy those technologies? The good news is we have them. The good news is that we have the platforms by which students can access their learning while remote. The other really important things we also have in place are plans that are already being executed to assess and analyze learning loss and to create individual plans for our students. So we know where they need support and it's great to see those underway. We also have in place the ability for a testing, a more robust testing program in schools in order to keep our students in the classroom and to test to stay if they're a close contact. So I think with all those things together, I think we need all of the pieces. And then we need to have a bit more consistency in how educators are leveraging those platforms while students are outside of the classroom. The good news is we've got all the pieces. All we have to do now is tune the dials a little bit more.
Great, thank you. Okay, Wendy.
Okay, so failing to prepare is preparing to fail. We did have a lot of academic loss during COVID, even with the remote learning. A lot of teachers were complaining that they didn't get proper training. When they did get it, a lot of time had passed. There were technical difficulties. The teachers were frustrated as anything. They were saying, you promised us that after this one thing you did, it would never happen again and it would happen again. So they were having a tough time and they're working as hard as they could to get this learning done. But some of the students, even when everything got up and running, still had problems. There, many students are just not used to learning this way. They need to have the in-person instruction. And we know, as somebody else here already mentioned, that there was a loss of learning for many students in our district. These students need to be helped. They got far behind, many of them, as much as a year or more behind in where they should be. And there was no, really no planning. I spoke to somebody at the district and asked, are you going to give some remediation to help those kids catch up? And they said, no, we don't believe in that. We just believe in starting everybody at grade level. And then as the year goes on, if we see there's some kids that need extra help, then we'll, we'll deal with it. But when that happens, once a student gets behind, they feel horrible and they get further and further and further behind. And then it's more and more difficult to catch them up. So this is something that needs to be nipped in the bud right away and handled. And also, the district, another thing is that they need to have a laptop for every student. So that in the future, when this happens, the kids will have that and be prepared and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Marnie.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear Wendy say that we should have a laptop in every classroom. So I'm hoping that she will help us with a techn- technology levy to allow us to do that. That is one of the key problems right now is we, for years, we did assessments of who had technology in their household, not who had individual technology. So not every student had access. And that's what we learned over COVID when we did provide laptops to families that could. The laptops we provided, though, were straight out of the school buildings. So when we went back to in-person, those laptops needed to go back with them. Now we are piloting at the middle schools. And so I'm hopeful that we will be able to utilize that technology. Teachers have been trained. Teachers should still be using Seesaw and Canvas to be putting the curriculum online, the homework online, any lesson plans online and making that available to students. But at the core of this is keeping students in school safely. And that's why the board members, and I have to, to champion Dr. Gallagher in getting us participating in the test to stay. I think his work and Deputy Superintendent Josh Almy was really key for us to be able to do that. So students can, even if they get a close contact, rather than quarantining for 14 days, they can test. And as long as they test negative, they can stay inside. Also, ch- champion Dr. Gallagher in getting us really committed to preparing, as Wendy mentioned, being prepared to give students vaccinations when they become available in the next week or so. So probably about two weeks from now. That work is already starting, so we'll be prepared. Having students vaccinated will allow us to keep them in school. And keeping them in school will allow us to help begin mitigating any learning loss they had from last year and keeping ahead and getting back on the road to recovery.
Thank you. Robin.
Yes, I'm a big fan of technology since I'm a network engineer, so. One of the things, you know, the teachers felt like they weren't trained properly on how to handle remote learning. And when I was at Seattle Pacific University, i- in the electrical engineering courses there, one of the things they did have was the, the classroom actually had a camera in it that you could log into if you were having to, because they do a lot of remote learning there. Because like evening class, classes and stuff. And, and also record the class. Because then if the student didn't quite get it in the class, he could replay the recording and say, okay, this is, you know, so they could, it's like the teachers, he's able to get the teacher to repeat herself, but she doesn't have to repeat herself. So that's a very helpful thing. And, and as far as training goes, I know that the Seattle Pacific University and Washington State University does remote learning. Maybe they could get somebody to come in and advise the teachers or give a, a little class on how to improve their remote learning skills with their students. Because they do it a lot and it's very effective. I know Seattle Pacific University it was. And also, if you're gonna do remote learning, again, it's good to make sure every student has a laptop of their own. And make sure you have good technical support within the school district to provide the support when things malfunction. And that's really important. And I think that would be effective. And it should be a cap to consider always as an option with, you know, with things the way they are now.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, our next question, this is a shorter question. We'll begin with Marnie and then go to Robin and then Wendy and Sydney. And here's the question. How do you see the district growing and expanding their equity policy? And what specific ISD policies do you believe need attention? Marnie, we'll start with you.
That is a really great question. As far as expanding our equity, we've, we've got a lot of work. So the, the policy is still fairly new. What I'd like to really see expanding, it's how we can reach out so that our teaching staff can be more diverse. In Washington State, 90% of the students that come through the teacher preparation program are Caucasian. So just seeking from our own state is not going to help us change at all the demographics of our, of our teaching staff. And there are well-qualified teachers of color in other states. How can we convince them to come and teach our kids? So that our, our kids that of color can see people that are like them, that are doing this job, that will, that will bring that, that insight to them. So I think that's some of the work that I'd like to see is expanding our, our workforce to be more diverse. I think another area where we really need work, though, is in our gifted program. And I think there was a lot of assumptions that by putting in an equity policy, that we were going to look for equal outcomes. And that is just a fallacy in the Isqua School District. We're talking about equitable opportunities. And what we want to look at is making sure that we are providing all of the resources, all of the correct testing to really identify students who are gifted and allowing them to participate in providing transportation so that that doesn't become a barrier. So looking at what are the barriers to, to the number of students that are in our gifted program? Are they truly being served? Another area is going to be special education. And as a mom that had both kids, we're receiving services from, from special ed. That is vital for us to really understand as we integrate and go into an inclusionary model that every gen ed teacher understands the needs of special ed students.
Thank you. Robin.
Yes, I think that the most important way to, to have an equity or equality policy is make sure that your testing standards are, are very standardized. In other words, that your testing will evaluate everybody on an e- equal playing level. And also that they don't make, like testing, like pre-testing to see where they're at educationally. Don't make it like a, you know, you know, a negative thing if they're not quite up to snuff. Just say that's, this is what happened and, you know, you can get better and we can help you get better and we're here to help you. And so, and that's why, because like special, special education where they have fallen behind. I, I think that one of the things that would really help is if they don't just have like a one-on-one kind of coaching or teaching, but to take children, say, for instance, that are behind on their reading. You know, have a whole class of like, because then they wouldn't feel like they're just some, you know, like, somebody's odd, you know. Oh, there's a lot of people that are having this problem and they can encourage each other. In the same way with dyslexia, if they need additional instruction, don't just do it one-on-one. Have the students in a classroom with other students. Because those, oh, I didn't know you were dyslexic. And then they could all say, yeah, we can do this, guys. We can do this. And, and I, I think also it makes the use, the teacher resources for the special education more efficient because they're not just dealing with one child at a time. They're dealing with a group of them. They, they don't feel odd because everybody's there at the same time. And I think it's a more effective way to do it, team teaching, in other words.
Thank you. And Wendy.
Yes, so I think this is a really, really important question to grow and expand the equity policy for, equity policy for all the students. Basically, when you have groups of students that are not getting the attention that they need in order to thrive, then there's your problem. And that's what you need to handle. Many problems in school stem from students that never really learned how to read. And that's why my campaign is back to the basics, because this is the foundation for all learning, is being able to read with fluency and with comprehension. And then that leads to all the other subjects so that you can do well and excel in everything. So teachers, many of our teachers at the elementary school level never research, never received training in reading, in spotting students that are having difficulties such as dyslexia. They need to know how to spot these indicators. And then they also need how to learn how to screen these students and then give them the proper tools to learn with. Many of them need remediation and they're not getting it. They just keep shoving them along and along and along. And they can't do it unless they're, first of all, given those fundamentals where they can thrive and succeed. So what we need to do is look at the students. What is their, find out what kinds of problems they're having specifically. And then put in place the tools that will help them be able to access all the learning that we have to offer them. And be happy students and not have problems anymore and not have teachers that are frustrated and in tears, like one of the teachers we spoke to who wanted to help her dyslexic students but didn't have the training and could not, was powerless to help them, basically. So we need to have a commitment to help all of our students succeed. Thank you.
You. And Sydney.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a really important question. It's interesting about growing and expanding that equity policy. And one of the things I found really fascinating when I joined the board, the equity policy had been adopted the year before I joined, was to learn that there had been some conversation about, was it a single policy as an equity policy? Or was it really part of every other policy? And what was the best way to look at that? And so from my perspective, I think it's really important as we look at our governance role and we look at our ability to review the progress and results of the school program, the schools' programs, that in each of those cases, we're taking an equity lens as, as we review that. And so the couple of examples that I'll call out that have been really top of mind for me lately, one has been extracurricular activities and programs. It's a very interesting area. We have a wealth of extracurriculars and they're fantastic for our students here in the Isqua School District. And they're able to, you know, inspire kids in so many different ways. But I worry that we've got people who don't even show up to that club, who don't even try to register for that sport because they're concerned about their ability to participate, whether it's financial, whether it's based on ability or, or some other factor. And I think it's really important that we look at that, that world of extracurricular activities, clubs, sports, and say, are we really applying our, our equity work there? And are we removing any barrier that allows all of our students to get the opportunity to participate in that space? The other area I would share is how are we looking at how we dole out resources and our finances across our schools? And are we ensuring that we're evaluating the need in each building? And what that student population and that teaching and administrative population needs and getting the right level of resource to the right school building? I think those are the really important ways that we can look at expanding our equity work.
Great, thank you. Okay, so for our next question, we'll begin with Robin and then we'll move to Marnie and then Sydney and then Wendy. And here's the question. As a school board member, how do we bring special education staffing shortages to the forefront? Particularly if it places the district in legal jeopardy because of federal funding mandates regarding special education? At a recent school board town hall, a parent questioned if there was a staffing shortage, why could a third-party vendor not be brought in to facilitate, facilitate students' special education needs? As a school board director, what do you believe is the best way forward for these families?
Well, as I mentioned before, I think like teaming different needs together so that the children don't feel so odd, like an odd person. And that gives the special needs teacher, you, you use that right resource of the special needs teacher more effectively because she can work with several children or a group of children or students at the same time. And, you know, and then you have like team effort there too that helps the students get, you know, feel, they do actually as a synergy, they actually produce a synergy of learning when they have the team kind of focus. And secondly, if there is something where we have a definite need and you don't have like a teacher that's skilled in that area or you can't get ones, there are shortages of teachers in various locations. I, I don't see any problem with having a part-time contractor or even full-time if it's a really serious need. That can be an effective way to accommodate staffing shortfall. Work to con- contract at various times. And it usually is a pretty cost-effective way to deal with staffing shortfall. And the only other thing is like, if you could maybe get one teacher willing to learn some of the special needs and, you know, with maybe a salary incentive there, you know, where they would train to do a special need as well as being a regular full-time teacher. That might be a way to do it as well. But yeah, the contracting, contracting somebody is a very cost-effective way. And I, I would definitely see that as a solution.
Thank you. And Marnie.
Well, some of our work in this area, right? Well, some of our work in this area right now, there are staffing shortages, specifically in special ed. It's really around paraeducators. And so uh we are seeking community members. We would help do all the training necessary for them and to bring them on board. So we are actively looking for people within the community. Uh there's a talk about second, you know, going to a third party, but we really have to talk to uh work that through labor unions. So the paraeducators have a right to make sure that the district isn't utilizing this as a way of shortchanging the paraeducators and that they're able to uh so we would have to negotiate that. And it is something we're actually actively talking about is being able to negotiate to use third-party resources in order to support students. Right now, it because it's not effective for us to be having the assistant principal be the paraeducator for a student uh and that is happening today. Uh that is happening. So we are looking actively at how we can fulfill those shortfalls. The other issue though really is around funding. Now, right now, funding is not the reason we don't have staff. We do have uh the proper salaries, but the other education or the other piece is the amount of money we're spending on special education through our levy dollars. So it's not supported by the federal government and it's not supported by the state. And this past year it was over seven million dollars out of a forty-eight million dollar levy went towards special services. And so we need to brightsize that. Today, I met with Senator Wellman, who is the chair of the um education committee in the Senate and showed her the data that we had and are really talking about what are ways that we can incentivize paraeducators to go into special services um and special education for our for our students.
Great, thank you. Sydney.
Thanks. Uh you know, I think this is actually a really good example of what we were talking about engagement a bit earlier. And that at times it may not feel as satisfying when feedback comes up, but it does work its way into the process pretty directly. So we had this conversation at the at the town hall and it was followed by a robust discussion about um the leveraging vendors, uh third-party organizations, what is the staffing? And so I, one, I just wanted to kind of hearken back to that engagement that sometimes you may not feel that in the exact moment that you're giving that feedback, but it absolutely makes it into the fourth conversation. I think, you know, as as Marnie just went through shortages abound, particularly in special education. Uh one of the questions I recently asked, it may have even been the last board meeting, was as we need more paraeducators, um is there a certification barrier? And so I was pleased to to hear that that was um training that we were doing post-hire. Um I think the district has been creative in all ways of trying to promote the need within the system to get folks from our local community within our own families to step up to some of those roles and help us fill them and get that education once they join. So I'll encourage that again tonight. If there's those in the community who would love to do this really valuable and important work, and absolutely, we have to look at at any number of outside sources to help. And I think job, one of the key jobs that's underway today is doing that analysis of what services and recovery plans uh with each family are happening. I was really pleased to talk with a family today um in the group I just had that their student went through their session on what recovery services. They were pleased at the conversation they had. They were able to schedule what services their student would be getting, starting, I think, in just a couple of weeks. And that's what we, that's the steps we have to take. Student by student, family by family.
Thank you. Wendy.
Okay, so yeah, we've heard from many people and on all of our forums about the shortage of special education teachers. And I do understand that it is a nationwide problem. It's not only in our district. So some suggestions might be to offer some kind of a bonus to attract special ed teachers to work in our district, make it just really attractive to them. To um send out notices and advertisements to every college we know of that is training special ed teachers throughout the country. And um have some kind of really engaging recruiting efforts to get these people to come to to Issaquah. Um as far as third-party vendors, that's always a possibility. There are pros and cons with doing that. But when you have students sitting there not being given the services they need, then sometimes you you have to do something, something is better than nothing. And then lastly, I would uh think that you could have a special ed teacher or administrator train the um the aides or the the paras in how to teach these children. And I know that a lot of school districts are relying on the aides right now and and a lot of them are very satisfied because they get to be very close with the kids anyway and they do a great job. So those would be my suggestions. Mostly, um you just need to act now because we're already, you know, almost into November. So these kids need the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question, um we'll begin with Sydney and then move to Wendy and then Robin and then Marnie. So the question is, the mission of the PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for children. As a school board director, how would you help facilitate students' potential bringing all of the stakeholders with their expertise in the same room in a meaningful and constructive way to promote policies that are financially responsible and taking every student's need into account? There has been much animosity and as a result, many unintended consequences in the past year. As a school board member, how do you propose bringing back trust and honor of everyone's collaborative expertise? And Sydney will begin with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we I talked about that in my opening is that one of the things that's you know, our job, our role is this liaison between community and the and the district is about rebuilding those repairing those seams that have come up within our within our community. And um I think we've started down that path with with allowing broad town halls to come together. I think we have the ability to in the future schedule working sessions and and group collaboration sessions to bring more more people to the table. I think the more that I've I've um been out, we, you know, doing listening sessions, meeting with groups of people, the more they felt that like, oh, you're actually listening. Oh, you're a real person. I think in the last couple of years, it's been easy to see us as just this little box on the screen, you know, the actual people. And to understand, you know, our passion for the work and how important getting that collective knowledge in into the process really is. You know, I think unfortunately, you know, COVID has has sort of stunted everything. It stunted our ability to connect even physically, to have folks in the in the same room together. We're we're finally getting to a place where people can come back together. So I I think that that is important. I think hopefully what people take away from the conversation and from their interactions with me and the things that in some recorded session on YouTube, some places, the listening is the most important part for me. The figuring out the themes between the needs and the wants of multiple groups has been where I try to spend my energy to figure out what that path through is. And yeah, I'm I'm excited. I love the town hall. I was really jazzed up after it. I'm excited to be at the next one. And I think if we can do um a coming together of multiple groups, I I'm I'm there for it. I'm and I'm happy to get it scheduled.
Thank you. Wendy.
So um I agree that I think it's really important for the community parents especially to to feel that there is an accessibility to the board and to the school district and what's going on. And some parents feel that that's not happening. I did a lot of door knocking during my campaigning and spoke to a lot of people in in many areas of the district. And a lot of parents, their main issue was, we don't know what's going on in the classrooms. We're hearing things. Um we try to find out and we don't get answers. So I think that this, you know, there needs to be clarity, accessibility and transparency. The same thing happens to parents when they go to board meetings. They express their opinion or their concern. And I know that the board hasn't uh they don't answer at the board meeting, but as I said before, a lot of the parents never get answers. So they're just kind of left in limbo. Um the town hall is a really good idea, but there has to be real two-way communication. It can't just be here's a real concern we have and several parents with the same concern. And yet, there's either no answer or an excuse. That doesn't really satisfy what the concern was. So your group, which is the Parent Teacher Student Association, it needs to have all those factors. And right now, it just feels like it's the school board and they kind of communicate with the superintendent who communicates with the school. But the parents and students are kind of left out. So I think that transparency and accessibility is something that could really, really have a lot of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin.
Yes, this is um this is something that I have been actually very concerned about. And one of the reasons I decided to run is that I feel that um there needs to be a lot more transparency in the communication in the school. And that's and also like the the parents need to know what's going on in their in the with the students at school. And that's why I think, you know, again, here I'm going back to tech solutions, but uh I think having a camera, a video camera in the classroom, you know, like focused on the board, where you can see what they're teaching, it not only helps the student, but it also assures the parent that what's going on in the classroom is proper and good. And so I think that that would be something very important to have. I mean, like you say, it couldn't be that expensive because they have them everywhere at Seattle Pacific University. I mean, they have classroom, every classroom has a camera and a video. Uh you may have to get some rather high-powered video uh routers or processors in the tech room. And you you might have to, like I say, get somebody from either University of Washington or Seattle Pacific Uni- University to advise you because they do this a lot. And then I also think that, you know, is if the if the when they have the 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 parents are voicing concerns at and I think that um that they do need to at least listen with respect, acknowledge what they're saying, understand that it is a concern. And even if it's just a few words, at least acknowledge that they have a concern.
Thank you, Robin and Marnie.
Okay, thank you. This is a a key issue, which is why I mentioned it in my opening. One of the things we have to do is repair our relationship uh with the adults in the system and that is our staff and that is our 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 parents. That is our general community who doesn't know what was has been happening but has just felt it. And so I think that um it is imperative for us to begin really working on what is our collective goal. And our collective goal is the success of our students. And having that at the focus, it allows us to understand what are parents' fears there. And then there are lots of parents who have voiced, I'm I'm concerned about what's happening in the classroom. I don't know. Uh there's discussion about what is transparency? What does that mean? We give a data dump of information. In some ways, is that obfuscating what parents want? How do we find out in and amongst all that information? What is it they need? So I think there is room for discussion around how do we communicate? What is it that parents want to know? What is the community concerned about? What are teachers feeling and seeing in the classroom? Um and then how do we make all of that coalesce around the one uh one thing that we have in common, the one big goal, which is the success of our students. And so um I I think that what has been the hardest over the past year and a half, especially we we never had people coming to our board meetings before when it was in person. And then suddenly, there's three hundred people there going, hey, I want to know what's going on. That's great. That is that is excellent. And so it is hard for them to understand. There's actually a myriad of things that we've done in the past and have desired, like desperately asking, please attend, please engage, please let us know. And people weren't interested. So I'm hoping that the pandemic, the one positive is that people will want to know, they'll want to engage. And as a board, how do we um how do we better communicate that we do hear you? Like Sydney was saying, oftentimes, we may not respond right away, but you'll hear us ask questions based on your input if you listen later on.
Thank you, Marnie. Okay, we are moving right along. We're doing great on our time. Um this is our final question and then we'll have a two-minute close from all of our candidates. We'll begin with Wendy, then move to Sydney and then Marnie and then Robin. And here's your final question. Now that we are eight weeks into the school year, what do you believe are the three highest priorities for the school board? And what value do you see PTSA bringing to the Issaquah School Board? We can't hear you.
Oops, I'm sorry. Okay, so the three priorities would be to uh do some kind of, I heard that there was going to be testing toward the beginning of the year, but I never heard if and when that actually happened. They're supposed to test all the kids to see where they are. And that would be one thing to do. And then to get all the kids that after the test, which should have been done by, I would say, the latest third week of school. Then get all those kids that show by their tests that they're very far behind, get them caught up immediately, do whatever it takes. Um get special, train aides to pull them out or whatever. You just need to cat get them caught up with the correct training. This could be done efficiently. Another thing to do uh would be to make sure that there is, we were talking about equity before and I think it's really important to show that there is equity among the entire student body, among the staff, the teachers, to create a harmony and a feeling of safety so that the kids feel welcomed, that every child, no matter where they're from, what they look like, what they talk like, what they act like, they are welcome in our school and they're going to be taught. And that they have the ability to learn and be successful in anything that they want. So whatever we have to do is we need to teach what we can and do whatever is necessary. My third thing, to um keep the kids in school safely. Because we don't want to go back to the uh Zoom learning. The kids get so much more from being in person, not only academically, but by being with their friends and socializing. I think all of them miss that so very much. So that would be the third thing that I think is really important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sydney.
Thanks. You know, the the PTSA is such a critical partner in this ecosystem that we have here for our our district. And so and so I I I love this question. If you look at my top priorities, uh they have been and they're going to remain, the the safety within the school buildings and making sure we're following all the needed protocols and and ensuring that we can keep this terrible virus at bay so we can keep our our kid in school. I think the second one is really all around um continuous work we've been doing to identify the current academic progress and potential challenge areas for our students and create individualized plans for their support. And then I third is really all about the the community within the school building, engagement across parents and teachers and staff and administration and us and the board. And I see the role of the PTSA is really critical across all all of those items. You you have your finger on the pulse of what's going on uh inside of our buildings. You are able to bring fantastic enrichment and programming into our our schools. And so we're we're so grateful. I'm grateful as a parent in the district for the work that the PTSA does. And I'm grateful as a school board director in really leaning on you to help us to continue to drive rich education across our uh community on all those facets of of safety and um how we can build programming for learning loss and support our kids as well as in really the community that help us build every day inside of our buildings. So I'm grateful for the work that you all are doing as PTSA and and I'm grateful the support for my own kids and for all the kids in the district.
Thank you. And Marnie.
Great, thank you for this question. I think uh in my opening, what I really talked about were my three key areas. One is a special One is a special education services, and I know that we have to get just those initial, uh, beginning of the year. We've, we've been working with every single special ed student and making meetings to really understand where over the past year, did they, um, did they fall farther behind? And then what do we need to do to, um, to bring them up and really looking at a family solution? It's one of the things Dr. Bailey really talked about is working with families about what remediation steps will work best for families. I think the other piece is going to be recovery for all students. And, um, it does begin with assessments. Assessments, uh, don't have to be a test that a student takes, although all students, uh, that qualify for taking the, um, the state assessment will be taking that. Um, in fact, we're in the window of that right now. But it's about, uh, and each individual teacher assessing their students in the way that they do as a professional. And so it may not look like an exam, but it will be their assessment. And then working with students to ensure that they're getting the, the education that they need. And the last one is going to be restoration of our relationships with, um, seriously with our, with our teaching staff, with our, um, with our, um, all of our labor unions, uh, to really make sure that they understand that we are doing what we're, what we can. Uh, we are fighting for funding so that we don't have to do another reduction in force. That was the most painful thing that I think that I've done in my time as a school board member. So I think there is restoration there and with families that we are working to keep your students safe. We're working to keep your student in class as much as possible because that's the best place for them. I think for me, the, um, the PTSA is at the heart of so much of what I did initially. I've been secretary, I've been a, a co-president, I, so all that. You have done so much as an organization over the years. We really do see the you as a strong partner in all of the work. So in order for us to meet our goals, uh, we do that because of the strong PTSAs we have.
Thank you. And Robin.
Well, this had come up several times and actually from emails that, that parents sent me because they found out I was running for school board. And one of the things, you know, that, that we had also addressed before was our communication between the, the parents, the teachers and the school board and the superintendent. And, you know, again, we've gotten some, like, some very unhealthy communication, uh, patterns going here. And, uh, I think one of the biggest steps to that would be to improve transparency. And, you know, and make sure that the communication lines are all open between the parents, the school board, the teachers, and, and the PTSA can really help that. One of the things that I think like, for instance, I know that testing is going to be done and there's going to be reports about that, not individual people, but there'll be sta- statistics and reports. And I think it would be a good idea to have that presented to the PTSA to, you know, so they kind of know what we're up against. You know, keep them in the loop on situations. And again, communication is the key to this. And it, and not only that, but it has to be respectful, polite communication on a even playing field. You know, you're not like looking down or, you know, we have to all see each other as equal, you know? And, uh, so, and, and also, I must time to have, oh, not very much. But again, I think that tech can be a great one for maintaining transparency, uh, with, not even to my third one. Because, you know, if you have classroom cameras in the classroom, then people can see what's going on and parents will be much more assured that everything is okay. And, um, and I didn't get to my third one.
That's our time for that. Thank you, Robin. All right, ladies, uh, candidates, we really appreciate all of you. We're going to go ahead and close with a two-minute close for each of you. Um, and let's mix it up a little. We'll do one from District Two and one from District Four and District Two and District Four. So let's begin with Wendy and then we'll move to Robin and then Marnie and Sydney.
First of all, thank you to the PTSA for hosting this forum for us and for all that you do. As a school principal, um, I know and appreciate all the work that you do in schools. The school board plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of our children. We are fortunate, our community considers education to be paramount. If elected to the Issaquah School Board, I will ask in-depth questions about policy and programs to understand the value they will bring to the classroom. I will listen to the concerns of our community and work collaboratively with fellow board members to improve our schools. I am the only candidate with teaching and educational leadership experience. According to schooldigger.com, right here in Issaquah Highlands at Grand Ridge Elementary, the academic performance level has fallen in their rankings from 57th in 2017 to 105th in 2019. I will not allow the quality of education offered in our schools to be diminished. My top priority will always be the continuous improvement of the quality and teaching and learning in every classroom for every child. It would be an honor to serve on the Issaquah School Board. I ask for your vote on November 2nd. Dr. Wendy Giora for Issaquah School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marnie, or yes, Marnie, correct? Or did I say Robin? Robin, I'm sorry. It's your turn.
Thank you. Um, one of, uh, when I first approached this, uh, running for this office, one of the biggest concerns I have is that, you know, coming out of a, these COVID restrictions, there's going to be maybe a falling away of, of the, the child's education. And so, or the student's education. And so I think there needs to be a great focus this year on focusing on STEM education, reading, writing, very core subjects. Because anything else that's added is, is going to fall away without these core subjects is the foundation of education. So that is my main focus. Good academic standards in these core subject areas, um, is very important. And also, um, we want the, the parents, you know, again, this one about communications. I, I would love to see a lot more trust and respect restored in the communications between the parents and the school board and the schools, because I think this kind of fell apart, uh, last year. And maybe it happened before, but I was just noticing on this year that there was a lot of concerns. And they felt, a lot of parents felt their concerns were not being addressed. So I think it's important to keep everything is, the communication lines open, encourage communications and to restore transparency and trust between the parties involved in the education of our students.
Thank you, Robin. Marnie, now you're up.
Great. Thank you. Again, I want to thank the Issaquah PTSA Council for putting together this forum tonight. And I hope the community feels they know each of the candidates better. It has been my pleasure serving this wonderful community over the past 12 years. My experience as a school board director will be vital during the next several years as we recover from the impacts of COVID on our education system. We will need to focus on the needs of our students, our staff and our community and work together so that each student can reach their full potential. The district will not only be impacted by the decisions made by, uh, locally by our board, but also at the state and at the federal level with mandates and laws that come forward. I have built strong relationships with our state legislators and I've engaged our federal congressional members each year that I've been on the board. And over the past year, I've also participated with a group of Eastside School Directors as we've met with staff from Public Health of Seattle, King County, from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, as well as county, state and federal legislators and staff as we work towards recovery. So I hope that you valued my work on the Issaquah School Board. And I ask that you please vote for me and my re-election on November 2nd.
Thank you. And Sydney.
Again, I'd like to say thank you for having me tonight. This has been a fantastic session. And I hope that I've given you a good understanding of who I am and why the work and continued forward progress of the Issaquah School Board is so important to me. We've been through a lot as a community in the past couple of years. And through every challenge, I've been here doing the hard work to move us forward together. My dedication to the critical work of the Issaquah School District remains strong. I'm incredibly grateful for the support, um, for my reelection coming from the educational leaders within our district, our ISD teachers, from parents, local elected officials and community members. Now is not the time to be looking backwards through a rearview mirror. Now is the time to build on all that we've learned and move forward together. I thank you in advance for your support and your vote by November 2nd.
Thank you. And I would just like to close with my gratitude to all of you. I have served on a school board and I know that that job is not easy. So kudos to you for even being willing to put your hat in the ring. It's a, it's a big job. So as a community member and as a parent and somebody involved with PTSA, thank you. Okay. So I think we'll go ahead and Lauren, did you have something to say? No?
Just thank you guys all for your time. Thank you Courtney and Tiffany for all the work you have done to take in questions and advertise and do all the things that made tonight happen. I really appreciate all, all that you've done.
Thanks, Lauren. And Tiffany, would you go ahead and post, um, the, the screenshot that you have showing people voting information? Okay. So the big goal of our candidates forum is to allow our, our, our public to be informed because we really, really, really want to advocate for everybody to vote. So, uh, here's your information. Your ballots should be out. They should be in your mailbox. I just got mine a couple of days ago. So, all right, everybody votes. And thank you again, candidates. This has been a wonderful evening, very, very informative. Thank you so much.